I'd like to call it order this meeting of the Monongahia County Commission for October 18th, 2017. Please note for the record that all commissioners are present. If you would, please stand for some moment of silent meditation and the pledge to the flag. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Renetta.
Good morning.
Consent and approval, please.
We have sixteen exonerations for $4,532.84, one request to create a statement for $6.30. We have vouchers for General County, $390,587.96, Cole Severance, $7,938.41, 911, $3,0941.36, Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,756.93, Camp Muffley, $650.26, Mason Dixon Park, $2,004.80, Assessor's valuation, $3,0265.79, Purchasing Card vouchers for General County, $24,129.15, 911, $11,028.14, Chestnut Ridge Park, $4,0412.21, Camp Muffley, $479.80, Mason Dixon Park, $1,014.55, for a voucher total of $452.2936. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities, the West Run Board of Zoning Appeals, Planning Commission, Mon County Historic Landmarks Commission, Abandoned Dilapidated Property Enforcement Agency, and Deputy Sheriff Civil Service Commission. We have fiduciary orders for October 18th, 2017, and the third quarter status report for fiduciary Commissioner Lynn Crane.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Introduction of new employees.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mark couldn't be here this morning, so this time we're seeking approval from the commission for the hiring of Ms. Sandra Rose for personal property tax deputy upstairs. She'd be working at the assessor's office. Her first day was Monday this week, and she came back, so that's always good.
That's a good sign.
Yeah, so she'd be full-time, eligible for benefits with probationary period of ninety days. And I have a letter here.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and welcome aboard.
Welcome and welcome back.
It's very nice to have you again.
Yes.
Thank you.
Back to work. Yes, thank you. Are there any other introductions of new employees? Yes.
The chef is at a task force meeting, so unable to be here.
Thank you.
So I will present.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you. We're presenting for your approval today a part-time, temporary position to be filled by Vicki Lipscomb. We added her as of the sixteenth, but today is actually her first day, so we don't know if she'll come back tomorrow, as in the assessor's office. But we are hiring her, as I said, temporary, part-time, hourly rate of $10.88, and she is going to help get us organized. We were slammed this year, and so we have several bins of tax bills that actually did -- that came back to us, so she's going to help us find addresses and get those mailed out to the proper people. So we needed some help.
Move for approval?
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded for approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Would there be any other introductions of new employees? Hearing none, we'll move on to comments from the public. We are now open for comments from the public. If you wish to speak, you have approximately three minutes. Hearing none and seeing none, we will close. Comments from the public. Colleen, do we have grants?
I surely do.
We do. Good.
The first one I have is the Governor's Highway Safety Program, the Distracted Driving Grant, in the amount of $1,310.21. The next one is another Governor's Highway Safety Program, impaired driving, for $7,360.1. Then I have the JJDPC Voices Two Grant, in the amount of $2,032.82. And there's also another JJDPC grant, this is the DMC, in the amount of $5,364.50. I have the Day Report Center, in the amount of $13,802.59, and VOCA, in the amount of $5,055.68.
Move for approval?
Second with a question.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded.
The grant that you have for the last one you said?
VOCA.
No, no, the one before that.
Okay.
Day Report Center.
Day Report Center. Is that the one that says that we're only charging $12 a square foot?
That's family court.
That's family court.
That's family court.
Okay, but I saw...
That's just for their little room. That's their match for their space.
Okay, that's what I need there.
That's the VOCA grant that they -- it's an in-kind -- it's an in-kind match that they have to provide, and the prosecuting attorney has to provide a statement every month of what the in-kind is for office space.
Okay, my only concern is that it says $12, and we don't agree it's $12. We're saying $24. I just want to make sure it doesn't hurt us with our court case.
It doesn't hurt us because we're way over our in-kind anyway.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I just want to make sure.
It's been properly moved and seconded for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, next, we have a public hearing of the Region Six Planning and Development Council regarding the submission of a regional application to include Taylor, Doddridge, Harrison, Marion, Monongahia, and Preston County for the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $125,000. We'll first hear on the presentation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you for your service. It is greatly appreciated, and thank you all for showing up. My name is David Gibson. I am with Region Six Planning and Development Council. May I bring this up?
Yes, please.
Because this will start a sign-in sheet for just for the meeting itself. Thank you. Whoever wants to sign in the back here, you're more than welcome. I'll try to stay on the written word, because if I get off, we're in trouble, we're all in trouble. So the purpose of this public hearing is to prevent information on the United States Housing and Urban Development's Community Development Block Grant Program and a proposed regional CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Project, to update the Region Six Planning and Development Council Strategic Broadband Plan that was developed in 2014, and is this document here, which I believe has been shared with the commissioners. First, please allow me to explain the Community Development Block Grant. It is a program that provides communities with resources to address a wide range of unique community development needs, and it began in 1974. The program is one of the longest continuously running programs through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The primary objective of Title I of HUD is, as amended, is the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environment and expanding economic development opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. The state does administer the CDBG, and they are awarded those funds, which in turn, they go around and award grants in smaller units to general local government, such as a municipality or in our case, accounting commission here. They carry out community development activities. For HUD fiscal year, fiscal year, I'm sorry, 2017, West Virginia was allocated approximately $12,500,000. The national objectives, the funds may be granted to eligible units to local government if they typically achieve one of three national objectives, and they are: Funds must benefit 51% of low and moderate income persons; Funds must be used to prevent or eliminate slums or blight, or, and that's an "or," Funds must address community development needs having a particular urgency. And that's kind of where we're hitting on today's meeting. Eligible projects that we're running through with this is broadband planning grants for municipalities and counties and regionally, and we're shooting for the amount Mr. Hawkins mentioned of $125,000. It's up to that. We're doing the regional, the six county region, and we can hopefully get between $75,000 and $125,000. Broadband construction progress, projects which would be next, you know, we're looking down the road, are eligible for up to $300,000 per project. And typically, Region Six, our niche has been water and sewer projects, and the maximum awards there have been 1.5 million. General community development and planning grants with a maximum of $500,000 for general community development and $100,000 for planning, and economic development with business commitment with a maximum of 1.25 million. So again, those are what they look as eligible projects. With broadband planning grants, there is no low or moderate income requirement necessary since these funds will be used for planning and not for actual broadband construction projects. Citizen participation, a grantee which is either, well, in this case is going to be a county, must develop and follow a detailed plan that provides for and encourages citizen participation. This is an integral part of the process and emphasizes participation by persons of low or moderate income, particularly residents of predominantly low and moderate income neighborhoods, slum or blighted areas, and areas in which the grantee proposes to use CDBG funds. The plan must provide citizens with the following: Reasonable and timely access to local meetings, an opportunity to review proposed activities and program performance, provide for timely written answers to written complaints and grievances, and identify how the needs of non-English speaking residents will be met in the case of public hearings where a significant number of non-English speaking residents can be reasonably expected to participate, excuse me. As part of the citizen participation process, two public hearings must be held for all first-time applications. The first public hearing is for the purpose of explaining the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is what I'm doing now, and I hope everybody's staying awake, okay, and eligibility requirements. The second public hearing brings together the community to discuss possible various projects. For applications that are being resubmitted, only one public hearing is required. A resolution by the unit of local government to submit an application cannot be signed until after the public hearing requirements have been fulfilled, which is what we're doing here. Any activity may be funded in whole or part with CDBG funds only if all the following criteria are met. Each activity must be eligible under Section 105 of the Act, includes acquisition, disposition of real estate, public facilities and improvements, clearance activities of buildings and housing, provision of public services, urban renewal, relocation, payments, assistance, or permanently and temporarily relocated persons, or nonprofit entities to carry out eligible neighborhood revitalization or economic development activities. And each activity must fulfill one of the three national objectives that I mentioned earlier, and each activity must meet environmental and clearance procedures. Because CDBG funds are available this year for broadband projects, Region Six proposed to update the aforementioned strategic broadband plan. This update will identify areas where broadband exists, areas with low or no access to broadband service, what type of services are available, and what type of projects that may have the opportunity to apply for future funding to construct the necessary infrastructure to provide the service. So that's the meat and potatoes of it, right there. In applying for a regional broadband planning grant, one county is required to be the sponsor or grantee for the project. Because the deadline for 2017 broadband applications is October 30th, the Taylor County Commission recently met and approved to be the grantee and will take the lead in initiating this grant. In order for this to be a regional endeavor, HUD CDBG requires that participating counties also hold one public hearing, that's what we're doing today, to discuss the purpose of the program and the intent of the application. The counties that are proposed with Taylor, to participate in this plan update with Taylor are Doddridge, Harrison, Marion, Monongahia, and Preston. This public hearing today in Mon County will satisfy the citizen participation requirement. Along with the public hearings, all participating county commissions are required to approve and sign an updated Community Development and Housing Needs Plan, which I have here, and a memorandum of understanding, which I also have here. Since the Taylor County Commission is the sponsoring county, only it will be required to update and approve its citizen's participation plan, which will identify the participating counties for this broadband planning grant. Once an application is submitted to the West Virginia Development Office, it will be reviewed by the West Virginia Broadband Council for recommendation for approval. The Broadband Council is similar in its function to the West Virginia IGDC, if you guys are familiar with that, and that stands for Infrastructure and Jobs Development Council for proposed water and sewer projects, except that the Broadband Council will review applications after submission, whereas the IGDC reviews water and sewer projects prior to submission of CDBG applications. So all we're doing is applying with this information today. There's no guarantee that we'll be selected to have the planning grant. The state of West Virginia has expanded use of CDBG funds that now includes roughly $700,000 of the state's allocation to be used for broadband projects and remaining CDBG funds for water and sewer projects and economic development and housing. Region Six Planning and Development Council has provided the assistance, or will provide the assistance needed to put together a HUD CDBG application and all associated requirements.
Okay.
That...
That's good stuff.
I apologize.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, do we have anybody here who would like to speak on behalf of this presentation in favor? Hearing none, we will move to see if there are anybody who wishes to speak in opposition to this matter. Hearing none, then we will not be necessary to have any rebuttal. Are there any questions that may be asked from this?
Just a couple of questions. So what's the timing of the expected award?
That's a very good question. We've been told December.
December.
December. So that's, that was the rush. We found out about this in September, and I, you know, I apologize because this is last minute. We're at October, what, 18th, and we're looking at having the submission into Charleston by October 30th, but we've been told December.
Okay, and the state is setting aside about $700,000 for this?
Seven hundred thousand.
You guys are going after, we are going after $125,000.
Right, right.
And it's for, for planning, so you'll develop some, a plan for broadband for the area.
Yes, and what we would do under, under that circumstances, we would hire, or we would advertise for, I'm more comfortable talking about like the water and sewer projects.
Yes.
So you advertise for engineers when, when that project is getting started. In this case, we'd advertise for somebody with broadband experience to, to get that started.
I'm more curious about the end product, so whenever, assuming you get the, the grant, then you would have some sort of deliverable from this that you would share at that time?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I also think this is being bandied about on the national level for actual funding of the broadband.
Yeah, I believe you're right, because, you know, actually, because it's HUD's money.
Yes.
So it comes with the federal, you know, backing.
Any other question of the applicant? Hearing none, we will close this public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
And, but then we need a couple of documents signed.
Do we need a motion to approve signature of those documents?
I wouldn't, I believe so, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that President, is it just signed by the President or the whole commission?
No, it is just signed by, yeah, the President.
Giving the President approval to sign the participation plan and the MOU as described.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. To allow me to sign, all in favor?
Aye.
If you'll present it, I'll sign it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have to do this for every county? We're the only one for the region that has to do that.
Actually, no, we're going in with every county.
Oh, yeah.
Today is Harrison, Marion, and Mon.
Okay. So you gotta get going.
Get a copy. Can we make sure that we get it?
I do leave a copy here.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Two. One more signature, and then we'll move on. Greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for coming and explaining it.
Well...
And I have it all down, so Ben can read it all. Work for it.
Thank you all for being so kind, and not too many questions, because I'm a rookie.
Are you defined?
But, public speaking, I'll get out of the way here.
That's okay.
You need one of these as well.
Yes.
Ah, no.
That's fine.
Yep, that's fine. To read what it says, okay.
He's going to read that one for you.
Yeah, we'll bring him forward.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to a presentation. When we began discussing the Courthouse Square renovation, it was brought up the question, was there a county flag? And the answer was no. So it was decided among commission that we would have a contest to design a county flag. So we have now county flag. I would like Mr., I'd like Mr. Andrew Riley, please, if he would come forward and, for this, and we would have you then describe what we have here.
Yes. All right. So I felt that Monongahia County was a simple and yet elegant county. I'm very proud of it. I was born, I was, I was born here and spent all my life here, and I really wanted to express that simple elegance. The blue bars, can you, do you mind holding it up?
I can.
The blue bars on the top and the bottom of the flag, I, I feel like the skies of Mon County are, they're very pure and untainted, and I really, I wanted to make those quite large and very...
Not tall enough to handle that.
Yeah, yeah.
Allow me to stand, okay? Usually I don't, I realize I had to. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And, anyway, the, the, what was it, the yellow gold inclines emerging from the blue, those really represents the rolling hills of Mon County, of the Appalachian Plateau that this county is located on. The blue spikes emerging from the county seal and above and below the 1776, I really, the rivers and streams, they're beautiful, and I, I wanted them to represent the beautiful rivers and streams just piercing through the valleys and the hills of this beautiful county. That's, that's it. Quite a simple design.
If you would come forward, we do have not only the presentation, but a check as well, and if you would like to bring those who accompany you, and please introduce them, if you would. And then we'll get a picture or two.
If you want to say your name in the speaker, so that way they hear, so you can hear it.
My name's Sam Burnett, and I'm the art teacher at Morgantown High School, and I want to thank the commission for the opportunity to include all artists of Monongahia County to participate in this design. We appreciate it, and he did a bang-up job. We're proud of him at Morgantown High. Thank you.
My name is Jen Kuncheski. I'm one of the assistant principals, and we're so proud of him.
And I'm the proud mom, Shelley Riley. Didn't, you know, he's very quiet about his assignments at school, so when I got the call from the teacher, it was a huge surprise and such a pleasant surprise, and he's a very humble, humble young man, so I know it takes a lot for him to stand up here, but I'm so incredibly proud, and will be proud that this flag will be flying at the courthouse for years to come, and maybe even little middle schoolers who study the history of the flag will be able to see his name, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Hands on me, get some pictures.
Oh, yes.
Let's get us all up here.
Congratulations. Here's the most important part.
Get out of school and work.
Colleen.
Yeah, but camera, okay.
All right. I'll put the check in. There's a proclamation, you can do with that what you wish, okay?
You should be about to have that show, man.
He wants to see the other side.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And congratulations.
Can we get you in there?
These are big chairs, man.
Yeah. We went on.
Got everybody? Thank you. Very impressive, it really is. It's, it's an honor to, when we, when we selected these, I can assure you that we were not looking at the back to see the submissions, and, you know, and so it was really a great surprise, first of all, to find out that it was, you know, one of our, one of our students rather than an adult. Now, admittedly, some I could tell were students because they were done to prey on, but still, still, the artwork...
That was mine.
Yes, the artwork is all appreciated as well, I mean, for all 85 applicants, really. We were very impressed. I mean, they were really, it was a hard decision. Thank you.
And then Andrew, as Ed said, I was blown away, and that's what, when I called Sam up, I said, it wasn't only the design, but what it meant and, you know, what it represented for Mon County, I just thought was just, I didn't realize when people draw maps, they actually, you know, had meaning. So, I mean, hopefully, the one other thing that I know Sam and I talked about was, we're going to see how many flags we might get, and we're hopefully that we could give them, or the schools would buy them and put them in the schools, and I, and I know that Morgantown High definitely will, definitely get one. I mean, that's a definite. And thank you very much.
Ed made an interesting point. We didn't pay attention to who submitted it.
Yeah.
Because I had no idea that, I know this family very well. I'm proud of them for, you know, just a small little bit of their life that I've, I've known them. And Dr. Riley, who is Andrew's dad, was MBA professor of mine.
Oh, really?
And a lot of the, a lot of things that you, you guys marvel at is because of him, what he taught me in the MBA program, so it's, it's a great family. I'm very proud of you, Shelley and Toldick.
And we hope that you'll be able to be here when we raise the flag the first time. So that's what we would like to do, too.
It's been very big news at Morgantown High. The flag's been flown, I mean, up on all the teleprompters in the lunchroom, and the kids have offered him congratulations all week long, and as quiet and unassuming as he is, he's, he's stepped up to the plate for this.
And we appreciate it.
He's basically made history.
Yeah, Mon County history now.
And you'll get used to public speaking.
Yeah.
I promise you will.
Maybe at some point the flag can be made available for purchase.
Yes, and that's...
There are lots of citizens who are already saying that they want one for their homes.
And you know it's good when on Facebook, it's been all positive comments, so that is a rare, that is, so you've done, you know you've done your...
I had, I was ready.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know you have to go back to school.
Thanks so much.
Please note the applause must break. Commission usually does not get applause, and we're not used to it, and we'll not expect it in the future, okay?
And we know if you have to get back to school...
Yeah, you're, you're wel, you're welcome to...
More than welcome to stay.
You're more than welcome to stay.
Yes, we know that. Thank you, Jim, for coming.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have the certification of the election results for the road bond amendment.
You're actually going to have to postpone that.
We're going to have to postpone that.
11/13, is it?
18.
11/18.
All right, we will have, we will have that postponed at this time, okay? Correspondence, Renetta, do we have correspondence?
We really, we have a few things.
Yes.
There is in your admin folder, if you can refer to that. Let me find it.
Pardon?
Hold on a second.
Oh, okay.
I must have exited out of it.
Okay, oh, good. I'm glad you do that on the computer. That makes me feel better.
Okay. The first is a letter from the prosecuting attorney Perry DeChristopher. She is part, their office is part of a coordinated community response team, that's part of the WVU safety grant, the Mon County Sexual Assault Response Team and the Stop Violence Against Women Act. Through our participation with these groups, we have been asked to lead a peer advocate training session. Previously, we had conducted this training session in the Mon County Courthouse, and most recently, the Justice Center. Training session for the semester is scheduled for Monday, November the 13th, beginning at 6 o'clock and ending at 8:50, and we are requesting your approval to again conduct this training at the Justice Center. So we just need to give them the go-ahead that they are...
Do we even have a motion, or just can we... Do we even have a motion or just can we, we can just, yeah, unless someone complains?
That's fine.
We're obviously fine with this.
Okay. Okay. The second is a letter from Ethan Moore at the Clay District Fair Association. It's a pretty long letter. I don't know if you want me to read it. But it's regarding their project at the community building there by-
The summation will be sufficient.
Okay.
Obviously, it'll be available for the record.
Well, I didn't read it all last night, so I don't know.
From the summary, what I can, what I can deduce, he's saying that they've received, the association has pledged an additional 20,000. So they, they've got a total committed amount of 50,000 of their estimated 60,000 to 70,000 dollar need for the project. And they're requesting us to assist them with the additional 10,000 to meet their goal. I know when they talked a couple of weeks ago, I thought he was asking for anywhere from, up to 30,000. So I, I think he's clarifying that 10 is, is what they're, what they're interested in.
Yeah, and I would like to see how we could do that, whether it be in the economic development, because we had asked him to go out and get the funding and he now got the commitment of all the funding.
We have, we have submitted some funding already.
Yeah, the five to 10,000 already.
They've done a lot of work with this. They've gone out and they've secured property from the school board. I mean, they're, they've-
They did their due diligence.
Well, if, if nothing else, we could still see as the possibility of a loan if, you know, if it's not a full grant.
Well, when we last met, he was going to arrange a tour so he can actually show us the project.
You had previously pledged 10,000.
10,000, yes.
Out of the coal reallocation for community development.
Right, okay.
So he needs another 10,000 on top of that.
Could we, could we, could we do, consider giving him another five with a 5,000 loan to be discussed? You know, would that be, at least they could get the money upfront so they can build everything. Is that a possibility or do you want to do all 10,000, you know?
Well, I would suggest to him, we need to have a discussion with him. If he was still interested in giving us that tour so we can actually see what they're doing.
Okay.
And then we can have a follow-on discussion.
Yes, sure. I, I agree with that.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll, we'll wait for him to get in touch with us and, and have that, and have that tour.
Renata, you can ask him to just, through you, go ahead and just schedule us.
Okay.
Does that make sense? All the other stuff after that first paragraph is-
Yeah.
I know, that's why I didn't read the whole thing.
That's right. We'll tell Ethan to be a little bit briefer in the future.
Brevity.
All right, next. Any other correspondence?
Um, the only other item that I have, excuse me, the proclamation that you all read at the Mason Dixon Park on Sunday at their celebration. That just needs to be put into record. So I don't know if you want me to read it or if you want to read it.
I don't think the-
Just put it in the record, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it. That's all of the correspondence.
Okay. Any unfinished business?
No.
Hearing none. We will move to new business. First, consideration of a loan agreement with the Stewartstown Community Council in the amount of $4,300 to be repaid within 24 months to complete the roof replacement at the Stewartstown Community Building.
Move for approval. Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, to consider approval of the President to sign the Trust Link Application and Designation Form for West Banco Bank Incorporated to allow the commission and its designees to access online bank statements for the University Town Center 2017 Series A Corporate Trust Accounts.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, to consider approval of an application outlining procedures for organizations wishing to apply for funding from the County Commission for community events to be held at the Monongalia County Ballpark.
Move for approval with discussion?
Yes, second with discussion. Go ahead.
My question is where, do they contact us for this or do we put it up on a website or something like that?
I would just refer this application to them if we get anybody contacting us for funds.
And then going forward, once we get our website up to date, maybe this is an area where we can have it out there where people are free to go and get it.
It's been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration of appointments to the Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board.
We had two positions that had expired and then they had both submitted, the current participants had, had submitted letters that they wanted to serve another term, Ethan Moore and Charles Kraft. And then we also had another application from a young lady that's been volunteering at the park, Nicole Lawfree. So that board is eligible for up to seven members. Right now, there's currently five with the two that wants to, that would like to be reappointed. So if you want to appoint an additional member, you can.
Move for approval with discussion?
Second.
It's been properly moved in seconded.
The two individuals that had been serving, obviously, they've been serving and providing a value to that board, so I would obviously suggest that we reappoint them. The other individual is an individual that lives in a neighborhood, lives close and has done a lot of it, volunteer work for the park. So I think it would also be a good addition.
It's been properly moved in second for reappointment and the new appointee. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Consideration of requisition number 13 for the University Town Center Economic Opportunity Development District Subaccount.
Move for approval.
Second with discussion.
It's been properly moved in second.
This is a normal requisition for debt service.
Yes, this is for debt, payment to the debt service, $407,043.55. So had a good month.
All right, good. It's been properly moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. To consider approval of requisition number one for Development District Number Three, Maple Drive Project from the Administrative Fund Account.
This is for annual trustee fees payable to United Bank for the Maple Drive Improvement Project in the amount of $2,500.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Lastly, to consider setting a public hearing date for the proposed Monongalia County subdivision and land development ordinance as submitted by the Monongalia County Planning Commission.
Move for approval with discussion?
Second. It's been properly moved in second for discussion.
Obviously, the discussion is the parameters around the date and the availability of the document, which we, we'll need to let people know where they can access the document. The code calls for 30 days from publication, from public notice. So what dates would that?
I, I will be able to submit that to the paper today. And pending what they say, we should be able to get that published on Friday. Friday would be October the 20th. And then, so a month from then would be the 24th, which is, we're actually closed that day.
Day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so if we want to have it on the next commission meeting, that would be Wednesday, the 29th, November the 29th. I guess my question to you would be, do you want to have just one public hearing or would you want to do two? Typically, we've done one in the daytime and one in the evening for issues such as this, but-
Well, we should follow precedent if that's what we've done in the past. So on that day, we'd have two meetings?
Yes.
I, I would suggest that, Anna, but I'll listen to my colleagues.
So we can have one at, have one at 10 o'clock and then have another one at six.
Yeah.
Now, will the one be at 10 o'clock or will we do our regular business and then make it at 10:30?
Well, it's, I usually publish it at, at 10 o'clock or as soon after as may be heard.
Okay. And then the last thing, as far as availability of the document, it's available?
We have, I've made copies already. We will send one to the county clerk's office so they can have one on file. And then we will have one available in the commission office. And then it'll be available at the planning commission as well.
It is, yes, that is moncpc.org. So M-O-N-C-P-C dot four. If you go there, you will find the full ordinance as it was submitted by the planning commission.
And it is only a Class I ad, so it only has to be published one time.
One time.
I don't have any more questions.
As we know, this has been a long, ongoing and very controversial situation. I will not vote against the public hearing because I think, you know, we have, that is a requirement. I am very concerned that we have not really looked at this or made decisions or realized the complexity of this situation. I'm not going to go in detail about my questions yet. But I do have one big concern and that is, how do we get the developers and landowners to get this information guide? Putting on the website is probably not going to be enough since when people see what this actually does, this changes the entire county structure. And I have a real concern about this. So I, I think we have to do more because the copies, I think it's 30 pages and 70 pages of definitions. I mean, this, so it's something, if it's on the internet, can it be down, you know what I'm saying?
They should be able to pull it up.
That's what I'm saying. So we could download it so that way we can, because I believe this is really important. I'm just very concerned with this entire situation. But as I, I realize, you know, you wanted to have the public hearing and, and I believe it's important the public have input into this.
Okay. It's been properly moved in seconded. We will be setting a public hearing of the 29th for this with two meetings, one in the morning at commission time and one in the evening at six o'clock.
Tom, to answer your question, you go there and you click on it and you can download it.
Okay, now is that the entire thing and the definitions?
Yeah, it's a 52-page document.
Okay, good. That's what I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay.
That's helpful.
All right.
And I agree with your comments that this is an important issue. You know, and again, this goes to my overall comment. We have these boards and authorities that work on our behalf and they have brought this up a number of times and it's been rehashed. They deserve to at least, something they've passed to at least have us hear it.
Okay, that's fine. And I, and I understand and I agree with that.
It has been properly moved in second for this hearing to be held on the 29th with two meetings. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any other new business?
No, sir.
Hearing none. Reports from elected officials. Kelly?
I'm just requesting that you place the sheriff on the agenda for next week to present the suspension list for our town's line sale.
So moved. So moved.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other reports from elected officials? Hearing none. Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
All three of us went to an amazing ceremony and weekend of the 250th anniversary of the Mason Dixon line. I, I can't say enough to Pete, Zapac, is it Zapu-
Zapaca.
Zapaca and JR and the board out there that did an amazing job. I mean, it was packed. Weather was fantastic. The rain held off. And it was a very educational and historical weekend and I'm just really glad that all three of us were able to be a part of it. The only other issue is, what I'm hoping is that the three of us are working in cooperation with the city council with this new bus depot situation. I, I think that the new city council may not realize that if the levy wasn't there, that the county paid for the majority of the funding for the bus transit. So I just hope that we are working together in sync, come up with a plan. I understand the purpose, but we need to have a plan before we suddenly move forward. And I hope that we and WVU will be a part of this discussion process. Thank you.
Sean?
I want to echo Tom's comment regarding the Mason Dixon Historical Parks 250th Anniversary and Dedication. It was, there was a lot of time put in by JR, by Pete, by our surveyor. I'll hatchet his last name, Bob Andreas?
Andriati.
Andriati. Bob Andriati. And just, I shouldn't have started naming names because there's just a lot of people that were involved. But it, it's so many, I was walking in back to the ceremony and a guy from Prosperity PA who just saw it on the internet and decided to come down, was walking in and, you know, I get the same reaction every time someone visits the park for the first time. They're like, wow, I didn't know this was here. So those guys have done a lot to, you know, I'm hearing a lot more of those wows. So I really appreciate all the work that they did. They deserve kudos for all that. Last Friday, we met to canvass for the, the road bond election. So we'll certify the results as soon as we hit our, our notification deadline. But it was pretty interesting, pretty eye-opening. I, I did want to note, when I'm, I'm a numbers guy, when I dug into the statistics, I saw one precinct actually had 55% people come out. I don't know how that's possible. And it wasn't some little one, you know, it was, it was one of the precincts at the Star City Town Hall. So, but there, and there were about, you know, almost, if you round, there was almost about 10 or 11 precincts that were in the 90% in regards to being for the amendment. So it was a pretty impressive showing by our county and I want to thank all the citizens today.
Okay. Now, last night was a fireman's meeting, which I attended. Things are going smoothly there, I'm happy to report. Yesterday, or excuse me, on Monday, Sean and I had the privilege of being interviewed by Lou Jacobson of Paletta Facts, which is out of Washington DC, which was interesting. That theater board was last Thursday as well as the 4H Camp Board on Monday. The most important thing that I'd like to leave you with is, please, we have had so many calls, emails, letters about Channel 12 not being available on your local news. So here's your opportunity. You must go to the FCC webpage, the website, and leave comment, I hope positive, regarding the change to make us not a subsidiary of Pittsburgh, but so that we can receive the local news channel of Channel 12, which is WBOY particularly, which would involve DirecTV and Dish. Dish and DirecTV have both indicated to us as well as everybody else that it's already a signed and sealed delivered. They will broadcast Channel 12 if this designation is changed. So the only way this designation can be changed is by positive input by the citizens. So if you actually want to and submit an email, we can possibly forward it, but it would be easier for you to go to this FCC website and leave your comment with them. Thank you. I know it's something that myself, I have actually discontinued Comcast because it might be my own minor protest, but if this is taken up, I will be getting a dish. So.
Move to recess till 11:18?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for recess till 11:18. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to come out of recess?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to come out of recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Move to certify the election results for the road bond amendment?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for certification. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Carrie, that we had to officially say or?
No.
Okay. Move to adjourn?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
We are adjourned.